Mr. Shannon, I can have you take your seat. Waited a lot of years to say that. And with that, we will begin tonight's city council meeting. If everybody will stand with me for the pledge of allegiance and then if you mind staying standing while Reverend Philinoi will provide his steAMication.
Eternal God and kind Father, we thank you for the blessings you bestowed upon us this day, especially the blessings of your son Jesus Christ and his finished work on the cross. Now we ask your blessings over this city council meeting, starting with our mayor Tom Stevens and the city council members and their assistants. As you to remember our police department, fire department, and first responders. We ask you to bless us when we leave this place, let us get on safely and find everything that we left. Just as we left it, Lord, our prayers that you lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil for thine is the kingdom and the power and the glory forever. Amen.
First item on tonight's meeting is the citizens' concerns. If anybody would like to speak to the council on any items not on tonight's agenda. Seeing none, we will go ahead and move forward with the consent agenda. And that includes the minutes of the January 8th, 2024 city council meeting and claims for city operations. Staff need to poll anything, wish to poll anything? Citizens wish to poll anything? Hold on just a second. And with that, does council have anything to poll on the consent agenda? If not, I will accept a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
We have a motion by Mr. Kip and a second by Ms. Wood. City clerk, roll. Oh, sorry.
Shannon?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Mac Mahan?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Kip?
Yes.
Blanks?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Onto new business. Our first item is awarding the gym flooring. Staff?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council, Justine Spees, Recreation Manager. Before you tonight is the request to approve the gym floor and cottonwood room flooring installation by Regions Flooring for the amount of $117,405. So this project did go out to bid in December of last year. When the bid closed, well, we did receive three bids for this project. Two of them were within our budget, but the lowest one, and I mean, they're definitely within our budget range, was Regions Flooring. All of them had great recommendations as far as who does great work. All of them had glowing reviews, so I wasn't concerned there. The type of flooring would be a sample of this right here. It's by Terra Flexport, basically. This is in a lot of middle school, elementary, and high school gyms across the region. So this is very durable. It will be this color, which is maple, so it'll kind of look like wood, but it'll be a lot easier maintenance and very durable, just like wood is. This will go on top of the existing rubberized floor, which I included pictures of that. We are in need of a new floor for sure. It served its life purpose, so I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Would it be possible we could pass that along to the council members? Does anybody from the, those in attendance would like to speak on this item at all? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to authorize the city manager to enter into an agreement for flooring improvements at the community center with Regions Flooring in the amount of $117,405.
Second. We have a motion by Mr. Shannon and a second by Mr. Reeves, and we'll start down there with Mr. Reeves.
Could include putting lines on the flooring also for basketball or whatever?
Yes, this does, this price does include the painting of lines. And I should have mentioned earlier that currently we have a middle-sized or a middle-school-sized basketball court, two volleyball courts, and two pickleball courts. With this new installation, we will have three pickleball court markings. Our, still our two volleyball and one middle school, but also it's for the side goals for basketball, we'll be including those as well.
Great. Ms. Blanks?
I don't have any questions.
No questions, look forward to it.
It was beautiful to see, I mean, you could see everything that's going to be, so thank you for the detail.
Thank you.
Mr. Mac Mahan?
The, the application, I'm sure you know all about that, right? I'm just kidding.
Oh, for like how they're gonna put it on, so it'll be a floating floor type.
Right, that's a tiny sheet. I was gonna ask you a question, though. So do they, do they glue this down or it sets right down on the floor?
This will be a floating floor.
It's a floating floor.
And then you'll, the sheets that they put down, they're that width. And then they, it's, it's not technically welding, but they called it Lego welding. So it'd be one, yes, that's a good word for it. They would fuse it all together as one large rubber piece, basically.
They give you like a, any kind of perspective on the duration of a floor, like how long that floor would last versus? So when the rubber floor went in, or whatever that composite that's in there now, I think that was, was that in the eighties?
Fifty's or eighties.
Were you running the show in the eighties?
I, I know that.
No, you weren't, but I just, that floor lasted a long, I'm confusing you, I'm sorry.
It, it did last a long time. The maintenance on it was, became very difficult in the last 10 years that I've been here. Finding someone to work on rubber floor has been almost impossible.
Right.
The last time we had it painted, there was two people who were able to do that type of work. One of them has since left the business, and I haven't been able, like five years ago when I tried, I hadn't been able to get ahold of anyone else to do it. So the rubber floor, we're leaving it there, because when they did install it, possibly in the eighties, I'm not sure, it could have been before that. But they used mercury as a leveling agent for the rubber. So that would be a large abatement cost, which is why we're leaving it there, and this will go on top of that floor.
Okay.
Their website says over 30 years.
Thirty, yeah. Played on it when it was new.
Oh, thank you.
There's a label right there.
Thank you.
I did not, I was not aware of having mercury underneath. Because I was gonna ask you if anyone gave you a quote for just like hardwood or something, but if you're gonna have to extract something, and there's an extensive cost to that, it just doesn't make any sense.
Yep.
Yeah.
I like it.
Thanks for all your hard work. I know it was, it takes time, the flooring, excuse me, the flooring, there's a lot to it, but I'd like the idea of the weld and stuff like that, so.
It'll be cool to see you go in.
And then I might ask real quickly, I, since this flooring is going on top, and you said they're not going to take out the anchors for the volleyball. Will they have to raise those up then?
A little bit, yeah.
But I guess they were afraid if they tore out that, those out, they don't know what they were gonna get into, and we could end up in a bigger mess.
Exactly. Ad alternate number two actually addressed that, because one, or the second ad alternate was to move the anchors a little bit. But because they weren't sure with the cost of the abatement, and they weren't really sure about how to go about that, they decided not to bid on that, but we'll accept it as, as it is right now, because it's not gonna hurt anything. It was just a, I was curious to see what the abatement cost would be.
Probably not. Any other questions, concerns, comments? If none, I ask for a call vote.
Wood?
Yes.
Blanks?
Yes.
Kip?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Mac Mahan?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Onto our second item, thank you, Justine, appreciate it. On our second item is the purchase of a 2024 Sani SW405 rubber tire loader.
What fun stuff to talk about tonight, rubber floors and now rubber tire loaders.
Yes.
Matt Beetz, Deputy Director of Public Works. Tonight bringing forth a quote for a new rubber tire loader for the Public Works Department. Currently, right now, to see, understand, we have two skid steers. They're the smaller, smaller bucketed loader. They are referred to a lot of times as Bobcats, it's a brand, but they're the smaller ones. They use those throughout, our crews use them throughout the city in tighter areas where they, you know, can't fit other things into. That's what they need, extra lifting power or hauling. The third one we have is actually a rubber tire loader, it's a little larger than that, but it's smaller than our current one we have now. It's used at the cemetery. It's primarily used up there for backfilling graves, and it's got a fit between the rows and the headstones. And so that leaves our last one, is our 2009 Case Y21E that we have down at our shop. It's like the workhorse of our crews. Everybody uses this thing. It's constantly being driven out, out into the city to be used to pick up big trees or plates, metal plates off the streets, and we use it a lot. With the crews using it more and more often and more, and we're doing more and more work in-house, it's becoming a problem not having, having that one out in the field, and then also you needed another one down at the shop to load rock or to unload, you know, dirt or something like that out of a truck. So we've, kind of what we, what we are proposing to do is to add an additional rubber tire loader to our fleet. That's where we started pricing and looking around at different loaders, and Sani, Sani is a, not as well-known as like a Case or a John Deere or a Covota, but we looked at it along with like any of the attachments and how it would best fit our, our crew. It's, I refer to it kind of like the Toyota of it, it's not a, it's not the Lexus, it's not the high-end stuff you'd get with like John Deere, Case. But our crews aren't in this thing 10, 12 hours a day, every day of the week. We use it quarter that much, if you'd say. So we started, we did go over, and we actually have been in these, this unit, drove it around, our crews have liked it. The new layout of this cab is really nice, and what our, kind of all the guys have pretty much said that this is the one they like. We had $300,000 budgeted in our account, or in our budget this year for a purchase of this new loader. This one actually comes in quite a bit under that. It allowed us to purchase a couple of extra attachments. One is a grapple, it's what we'd use if we have a big storm come through town. It actually has like a, it's kind of like a claw that will grab trees, branches and trees and pick them up and hold them in place so that we don't, you know, they won't keep falling out. You don't have to cut them all up so they fit in the bucket. And then the other one is a set of forks. We've run into several times where what we have down there now is not strong enough to pick something up off of a truck. Like a lot of big pumps that will come in for the wastewater plant. We have no real safe way to offload those without, you know, petering right on that edge. So we looked, we added an extra set of forks to it. Sourcewell, if you guys don't know, is a cooperative purchasing program. Everything's bid out, and we basically can go on there and say, okay, after we've figured out, you know, what our specs is and what we want, we can go on and actually pick it out, and it's been competitively bid. So we're getting, we know we're getting a good price. And this one actually came in like $60,000 under budget from what we had originally planned for spending on this thing. And that includes the additional attachments, so. So tonight, we're actually, we're looking basically is for you guys to approve us to make this purchase. Is there any other questions?
Thank you, Mr. Beetz. Staff need to add anything else? If not, any, any questions, concerns, comments from the citizens on this item? Seeing none, I would accept a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to authorize the city manager to enter into an agreement for the purchase of a Sani SW405 rubber tire loader from State Tractor and Equipment for the amount of $239,899.54.
We have a motion from Mr. Reeves and a second from Mr. Shannon. We'll start down at this end with you, Mr. Shannon, this time. Do you have any questions? Throw your mic.
I don't know that, exactly what you needed, but I can see where the grappling and the larger one would be of tremendous value, so, good, thank you.
No questions?
Is this something that's like ready for purchase or?
Yeah, we expect to have it within the next couple of months.
So they, you said, did you guys get a loner or something like that, just kind of get an idea of what it? You said, been inside, kind of like the setup and stuff, I was listening to you earlier.
Okay, the, we went over to State Tractor's location over off State Avenue. They had a, they had a unit in there that they had just brought in for another company, and we were able to get in that there and actually drive around their lot and check it out, see how well we liked it.
So it's large enough to offload some of these pumps that you were, you had referenced earlier?
Yeah. The other thing we were looking for was our current one, the 2009 Case that we have, when we go to, like right now when we're loading salt in the back of our dump trucks, we are right at the very edge of how high we can reach the bucket up and to dump the salt into the spreader, because once you put the spreader in the back of the truck, everything gets a little bit taller. This one actually is, gives us about another 13 inches of clearance on top of that, so. Yeah, we've looked at several different, looked at several different options, or we had a kind of our criteria of what we were looking for, and just hit all of them.
Is this, is it big enough? I mean, is this, is this the right size for now, or maybe should we?
Yeah, this will be big enough for.
Well, what I'm saying, or do we wait?
Be more definite, please.
Right, or do we wait a little longer and get something a little bigger, or is this something that?
This is.
Definitely do the job.
Yeah, it'll definitely do our job. For what we do internally here, it's way more than what we need. I should say that, it sounds bad, but it'll take care of us.
Perfect.
No questions?
Nothing.
Well, first, thanks for the work on the bed, and make sure your crews know thanks for all their hard work lately. I know the weather's been kicking your guys' butt, so thank you for that. I'm just curious, what's the lifespan of equipment like this?
Oh, lifespan of them? Well, let's see, I've got, one of the skid steers we have down in the shop is a 94, I believe. It depends, I mean, this, the warranty on this is like head and tails above anyone else. I mean, five years, 50,000, or 5,000 hours is a lot. Our current case that we have down in the shop now has around 2,500 hours on it, and it's a 2009, so. Like, we don't use it every day and put like, you know, 12 hours a day on them, so. They seem to last a lot longer, and we're getting, where we, you know, we do a lot of our maintenance, we're really keeping up on a lot of their stuff and trying to prolong the life of all of our equipment as far as we can.
Awesome, thanks for all your work.
Anybody that's already using one of these, find out, this particular, right, like I say, I haven't heard of it.
Of Sani?
Yeah.
Yeah. I know some people that have, that use them, and they use them on a daily basis. Sani, we contemplated purchasing a excavator, Sani excavator last year from them as well. We just decided to kind of keep our fleet halfway similar with our excavator, so. Everyone that has used them says that, actually, they're, they're gonna be great for our use.
Good.
Yeah.
I might ask real quickly, the, the different attachments that go on it, are they interchangeable with the case, or are they strictly, can only be used on the Sani?
No, most of the time, they're usually, they're usually interchangeable. Sometimes they'll get a little off. We had a Volvo once that had a bucket that was a little off.
I just didn't know if it's gonna give us some flexibility if we have some different attachments that we don't have for the current case, if they could use them on both.
They will be able to, and this one actually has a quick disconnect, which will make it a lot simpler for our staff to get, they'll be able to basically go over, drop, you know, bucket, come turn around.
Right, rather have to get out of the cab. Any other questions, concerns, comments from anyone? If not, I will ask, off of the boat.
Kip?
That was me, yes.
Mac Mahan?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Blanks?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am, appreciate it. And on to the last item on tonight's agenda, for business, appointment of a new city council member to vacant Ward 2 position. I want staff's presentation.
So the code of the city, Chris Break, city clerk, sorry. Code of the city of Bonner Springs provides direction on how we fill vacant seats. Chapter 1, Administration, Section 127 says, states that any vacancy of the governing body of the city, either by death, resignation, or otherwise, shall be filled by appointment of the mayor with approval and consent of the city council, and shall be effective upon such approval or rejection by the governing body at the next regularly scheduled meeting. And it goes on to say, any person presently filling such a vacancy or hereafter so appointed and approved shall serve for the balance of the unexpired term of the office of the person vacating such office. So Tom Stevens elected, accepted his election as mayor, leaving an empty council member seat. The city advertised and accepted applications for the vacant seat from all interested residents of Ward 2. The person appointed to the position will serve for the remainder of Mr. Stevens' term through 2028.
Thank you, staff. I'll go ahead and make the announcement in case anybody would like to comment. I'll make the announcement first before we ask for citizens' input. Following procedures and protocols that have been kind of established over the last, that I'm aware of over the last 20 years, could go back even farther. A committee was formed of myself and the four former mayors. They all reviewed the applicants, and a decision was made that tonight we're gonna put forward the name of former council member Danny Gurley. Would anybody from the citizens like to address the council on this? If not, I would accept a motion.
I make a motion to appoint Danny Gurley to the vacant council member Ward 2 position with term ending January 2026.
Second. We have a motion by Mrs. Woods, a second by Mr. Shannon. We'll go ahead and start here with Ms. Woods.
Welcome back.
Mr. Kip? Ms. Blanks?
I just want everyone to know how gracious Danny was when I filed to run and took me out to lunch, and we talked for like over two hours. And she was genuinely welcoming me to the race and commended me for getting involved, and just showed commendable leadership. And we were both hoping, no matter what the outcome was, we would still have the opportunity to serve, so I just have the utmost respect for you and admire you so much for serving outstandingly for the last eight years and hoping to continue to do so for the long future, so. Yeah, I just can't say enough about you and appreciate your guidance along the way. I'm happy to have you.
Yeah, I will, I have always appreciated the amount of effort that Danny has put in there and finding out about things before the meeting, so it'll be good to have you back.
Mr. Mac Mahan, comments, questions, concerns?
Your energy, right, your resilience. When I first came on, you know, I just, you just had that ability to make me feel really welcome and part of the team, if you will, and, and I'm super excited for you, it was meant for you to be back up here. And congratulations, look forward, we look forward to serving with you.
Yeah, I echo that as well, and thank you for being a mentor with integrity and grace, and yeah, so excited to have you back.
It's, I'm glad you're back, because it's, this is a, this is a great council, and there's no agendas. We all get along really well, and we work together, and not seeing you up here for the last, at the last meeting, it was kind of an empty feeling, so I'm glad you're back.
I will just say that we did have two applicants. The other applicant, I think, would have also done a wonderful job. They were both well-qualified, and I'm hoping to find other opportunities for that individual serving within our community. So with that said, there's no more other questions or concerns, I will call for the vote.
Reeves?
Yes.
Blanks?
Absolutely, yes.
Kip?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes to the max.
Mac Mahan?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Motion passes.
And if I had a singing voice, I'd say, "Welcome back." And with that, we'll move on to the city manager's report. Ms. Vogon?
Yes, we shouldn't touch that. Amber Vogon, Assistant City Manager. I just wanted to bring your attention to something. You may have seen it on our Facebook page, I know that it's out there. Megan Gilliland, our Economic Development Coordinator, has been working on a destination creation class, which is a, it'll be a weekly class for entrepreneurs that will teach them how to grow revenue and grow their business and their social media and things like that. It's something that she's put on before in other locations, and it's been a really great opportunity for businesses. The sign-up closes February 14th. There is a $350 deposit required, but if we have current Bonner businesses that attend all of the sessions, they will be refunded that full amount. So essentially, it would be free for Bonner businesses. We just require the deposit because it does take a lot of time and materials to go into this class, and if we have several people that sign up and don't attend, then it would fill the seats of others who may like to attend. So we do require that deposit upfront, but if they attend all of the sessions in their Bonner business, then we would refund it to them. But it will be open to other individuals as well for the same cost. And then I wanted to just make sure that you saw in the city manager's report that the drive behind the city hall here between PD and this building will be closed next week for the window project in the community center. We're hoping to have that wrapped up by February 9th.
Thank you, Ms. Vogon. City council items, and we'll go ahead and start right here with you, Mr. Mac Mahan.
I have.
Ms. Long?
There's been, over the years, several, well, many citizens who have come forth talking about ordinances, concerned about recreational vehicles, and also noise ordinances, things like that. And I'm suggesting that because of the number of these type of requests that we get, that we have a workshop to talk about evaluating where we're at from Bonner Springs' perspective as a comparison to cities our size and cities neighboring us to see if we're still doing everything the way that we should be, just to evaluate it, to see, because we have had a lot of citizen requests for this, so just a suggestion. Yeah, that's it.
I'd like to definitely say thank you to our Public Works, street, guys on the street, fire police, ambulance. Those, everybody has just gone through a real rugged time right now with the way things are, not only in Bonner, but everywhere else, but speaking strictly for Bonner, and how much I know I appreciate it, and I've heard absolutely no comments, I've heard one about the streets. And I haven't heard anything else from anybody else. And what I saw, the times I was out, at different times, it was a fantastic job, and I'm very, very proud of them, and I'd appreciate that if we could send or let all of them know about it through a letter or something, that I think that would be great, so I appreciate them deeply.
Ms. Woods?
I too am impressed with the fact that you can drive in Bonner, it doesn't matter how much, you know, there is, everything was cleared in the back roads and things. And I guess it'll be soon when, on the permits, we'll have building. Nobody's gonna build anything right now on the permit list, I just thought that was kind of funny, you know? But thank you for the.
It'll be coming, stuff will be coming, so.
Yeah, okay.
Welcome back, Danny, sorry I missed my, my roll order. I thought it was like questions for you.
Any kind of comments are welcome.
Welcome.
Yes, welcome, Danny, and thank you. Yes, welcome, Danny, and thank you again, Public Works. Also, I love that, how you guys have left up some of the lighting downtown. I think that's great during the cold months, especially for our businesses. It just kind of gives our downtown that more magical feel, so I am team lights, as long as you would like to leave them up, so thank you.
Couple of thoughts about the Bonner Springs Mobile Home Court. It's actually known as Bonner Springs Estates, down by Southwest Steel and across from Ten and Two Coffee and so forth. I don't know if any of you have been down there, but that place has improved so much over the past year anyway, maybe more than that it's taken. But there's a lot of new mobile homes down there, there's a lot of new concrete been poured. It's really been a lot better than it was. And I'm really somewhat proud of that fact that, that, that they've done that down there. I was not aware of it, so, but just, just as a thought there, I thought that's a, a good improvement for Bonner. And I can remember years ago when we, when we came here, you didn't really want to be down there, but now, pretty nice.
Thank you, Mr. Reeves. Onto the mayor's report. You saw that I attached the mayor's report of all the activities I'd been going through for the last two or three weeks, but also just a couple additional notes. One is, as Mrs. Brake brought to our attention, is that we have a birthday coming up. Next Monday is Kansas's one hundred and sixty-second birthday. So I think we should all be proud to be a Kansan and moving towards that second century mark. Also, I want to talk about the, real quickly, Mark. I'm going to be, I talked to Mayor K R in Edwardsville and I will end up being the Mark representative for our two cities this next year in 2024. And Mayor K R is going to be the alternate, so hopefully I will be providing some additional information on Mark as we move forward. I believe I've got a meeting scheduled next week, or it could be this week, I'll have to look at my calendar, but one will be coming up before the next meeting. We are going to be looking at, which we should do on a regular basis, looking at the meeting procedures that we follow. There have, there get, there are updates constantly from both the, the state as well as the LKM recommendations. So talking to Mr. Peterson and Ms. Brake, I believe the intention is to have a workshop, hopefully by the next meeting, where we will sit down and we'll be able to talk about potential procedural changes in meetings, such as possibly, do we want to go with timers, those type of things. Also, since we're talking about changes, kind of following a little bit of protocol, be prepared, look where your nameplate is next meeting, cause we will be moving some seats around. Everybody, give everybody a little bit of different perspective, where they sit, who they sit by, so. We'll be changing the seats around. I also want to thank Public Works. I believe any of our, any of our departments that have to spend time on the roads, police, fire, they all deserve a thanks when they have to get out in this type of weather, but I really want to thank Public Works. It's nice when you're the mayor and you, you hear and see nothing but comments. You hear personally comments that are on the positive side as well as social media, you see postings. Only saw one posting that was negative. That day I went down that street and the only issue was, it was a street where there was parking all on one side because of duplexes and I don't know if they expected a truck to go in and out between cars, so. Otherwise, the street was clean, so take it for what it's worth, I guess. But I want to tell my appreciation for the Public Works for doing such a good job of cleaning the streets. And then last, Ms. Long, yes, I do believe that, I'm sure we can talk with both our assistant city manager as well as city manager about possibly maybe, maybe having a workshop at some point in the near future to talk about some code ordinances, changes potentially for on-street parking and such. With that, if there are no other questions, for Mr. McManahan, no, Mr. Kip? Go Jayhawks, we're adjourned.